Thanks for watching City Council Comments. I'm Steve Erickson along with Councilmember Bill Kicker. Today, we're talking about both the September 1st and our September 15th City Council meetings. Thanks for coming in today.
Well, thanks for having me.
We kind of got everything out of the way here in the first half of September.
Yes, we did. We did, definitely.
It's kind of weird because I feel like we normally have a council meeting after kind of Labor Day, you know, but this year with it being so late, we had our first meeting on exactly September 1st.
Right, right. It was an early start. So yeah, we've got a lot of September left and we're done with our meetings.
Yeah, and hopefully the weather is kind of warmed up a little now too, so it stays nice.
That would be nice, so we can enjoy a little bit of it.
At least a few more weeks.
Yep, for sure.
All right, let's jump into things here. We're going to start off by talking about the items on our September 15th meeting. One of the first there, we had some Girl Scouts in for "Girl Scouts is a Force for Good Week."
Yeah, right. So it was a proclamation and basically in the proclamation, it was stated, it talked a lot about the Girl Scouts, an organization that started in 1912, and just how good of an organization it's been for young girls to participate in, to gain confidence, to learn leadership skills, and then also to give back to their community. So, and as in the proclamation, as it stated, their giving back to their community was helping out during this pandemic where they created and distributed masks and donated cookies for essential workers. So they've done a really nice job of donating back to their, giving back to their community. So, great organization and nice to have them, you know, there in front of us. During this pandemic, we haven't had a lot of that, so it was kind of nice to see organizations coming back in, you know, and getting their opportunity to, you know, to show what they do, to show what they're giving back to the community.
Yeah, I was thinking that when they were there, like if they were going to come up and introduce themselves, usually we pass the microphone, which obviously can't do in COVID times, but it was nice to have them up to the public podium when they were able to introduce themselves, and they also helped lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Absolutely. Yep, yep. Yeah, it was a, yeah, a nice event. Very nice to have the Girl Scouts and they left us some cookies. They weren't the traditional Girl Scout cookies. They have a new variety and they were more like a mint, but boy, were they good.
They were good.
Yeah, yeah. I made sure I grabbed one of those.
Someone said that behind the scenes. They're like, did they bring the cookies? And then they actually pulled out, they weren't the actual cookies, but.
Right, right. Yeah.
But a different kind of treat.
They came in a tin and, but yeah, it was more like a mint, but excellent.
All right, they might have to start selling those.
Yeah.
All right, council adopted a resolution accepting donations. This was kind of for the fire department, correct?
This is for the fire department, yep. They received a grant and two donations. The grant was from Center Point Energy for $2,500. And then Bauer Services gave them a donation of $1,000 and $850 from the Coon Rapids Fire Department Community Fund. And these were to purchase stove top fire stops. These are devices that they, that they put in above the, above the stove tops of multifamily units. And there's been, in the last few years, the fire department has noted that as far as property damage is concerned, these have been, fire, stove top fires have been the highest contributor to, to that damage. So these automatically go off if there is a fire that's out of control on your stove top and distinguish the fire or extinguish the fire.
Yeah, pretty cool. We've done some stories on them and just to see how they work and, you know, there's obviously a lot of folks live in a multi-unit building, so to be able to contain the fire to the one unit is very important.
Yep.
Not letting it get out of control.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess there's YouTube videos. You can go out and, and view that too, just where you can actually watch it. The mayor was talking about that, so.
Yeah, all right. Council adopted a resolution establishing a new polling location for precinct 5-4. And I found this interesting because we actually moved them to a different location for the primary, and now we're kind of moving them back to their rightful location.
Exactly, yep. So they originally were at the 5, Ward 5, Precinct 4 was originally at the Emma B. Howe YMCA, previous to the, the primary, but during the primary because of COVID, Emma B. Howe YMCA wasn't able to, to house them there, so we couldn't utilize that. But yep, they're moving them back. One location, the Spirit of Grace Church is not large enough for, two locations, general election is going to have a lot more people showing up for it, obviously. So moving it back, it's my understanding that there will be a notice sent out to those residents that vote at Emma B. Howe for Ward 5, Precinct 4, to let them know of the change.
Okay, yeah, certainly in a presidential election, there's going to be a lot of people out voting, so we need the space to do that.
Absolutely, and especially during the pandemic, much more space is needed. So things are a little more spread out.
All right. Council adopted an ordinance, adopting the 2020 Minnesota State Building Codes. This just puts us sort of in compliance with the new state building codes?
Yeah, yeah, it does. Something that the, you know, the state goes out and they update their codes and then municipalities will follow and, and adopt those state codes. And I just wanted to mention that Greg Brady, the chief building official, has, had put together, at the request of Councilmember Demmer, he, Councilmember Demmer wanted to know, you know, there's a lot of information when you go through this to see the changes and was interested in those changes that may, may have a cost to building. And so, so Greg Brady had put together a really nice summary of that information and just wanted to make sure people are aware of the fact that, you know, all the information that we get is information that they can look at. So they can go online and look up the agenda. All of that information is there. All of the same packet of data that we have is available to the residents, so they can go out and view this summary that Greg Brady has put together if they're interested in seeing, you know, a fairly concise, just a three-pager on, on this information. So I just wanted to note, he did a nice job on putting that together and it's available for others to view.
All right, but as far as I understand it, there's no major changes to talk about?
No major changes, no. Nothing, no, nothing major at all. And most, most of the changes that did, that are more upfront costs, but on the back end, they will save money, you know, like in energy costs, more insulation required, but that's, you know, the energy costs for their bills. So that offsets those.
And some of this is stuff with home builders have to know and all that kind of stuff. Not, we don't always, as citizens or homeowners have the general knowledge of what's required.
Right, right, right. Exactly. Yep.
All right. Council adopted two resolutions regarding appealed miscellaneous assessments.
Yeah, so I like to mention this just because I like to recognize the Board of Adjustment and Appeals at the difficult job that they have. When people appeal, we have a program where we, we have citations for residents that, that aren't meeting certain requirements, you know, often. It started out really, we'd see a lot more grass too long or outdoor storage of garbage, junk, whatever, wood piles, things like that, or cars that weren't, kept up with the tabs, you know. So different things like this. This particular time around, we saw more of citations on landlords who weren't getting their rental license. And so, just important to reiterate the importance of, if you're a landlord in Coon Rapids, you need to have a rental license. And there's other programs that you have to go through that are educational, that really can help out landlords and help out the city as well. So it's a real good partnership there. But it's important for residents who are landlords or landlords to know that they need to get licenses, so.
Right, because they're the ones that get the notifications if there's an issue and all of that too.
Absolutely.
Right? The renter's not the person responsible for if the lawn's too long or
Right, right.
Those types of things that would fall onto the landlord?
That would fall onto the landlord, absolutely.
Okay, and they're registered, if they're registered in the city and all that, they get, should get all those notices?
Yes, absolutely. Yep.
Okay, so basically, this hearing that the Board of Adjustment and Appeals does, they kind of listen, people appeal them, and then they make a decision whether to kind of overturn it or keep it as is.
Absolutely, absolutely. And they do such a good job. They're, I mean, they're very conscientious, they're, they're very respectful. Like I said, what they do is very difficult, but they do a real good job of it. So there were a few that, that they, you know, a number that they affirmed, and there were others that they reduced or eliminated due to the appeals. So it's a good process.
All righty. Council considered a resolution authorizing the EDA to expend funds for the business grant program. This is something we've been talking about for several weeks now. We've done multiple stories and we've gotten a lot of businesses here to participate in this, in this time of need for them.
Yeah, yeah. It's why I wanted to make a note of this. So we have the Coon Rapids Business Relief Grant Program, which you mentioned you've, you've done a lot of stories on. And so far, we've had 72 businesses apply for this. And you can continue to apply online through Friday, September 18th. So I wanted to make sure that, that businesses were aware of the fact that it's still open. You know, we allotted $1.6 million to this program for small businesses with less than 100 workers. So it's a good opportunity for some businesses, smaller businesses to be able to recoup some of the costs that they've endured, you know, through the hardships that they've had through the pandemic.
Yeah, and there's certain rules they have to prove, economic hardship and all that. But this is money that came from the Federal Cares Act.
Yep, Federal Cares Act money. The city of Coon Rapids was allocated 4.8 million for the different things that, that we have, that the city itself is going to have to take on, but we, the city decided 1.6 million would be allocated to the businesses. So we're, we're more than happy to support that, definitely support the businesses and know it's been difficult for them during this pandemic. So it's really, really nice that we can use some of those federal dollars locally. And you know that they're, you know, they're getting directly to the businesses in these grants. So good program.
Yeah, great to be able to help support them as they still try to recover here.
Absolutely. Yep, yep.
All right. Council considered a resolution providing for the sale of about $7.2 million in general obligation improvement, utility, and equipment bonds. This is something we do from time to time. They kind of look at rates and we go out for sales or I don't, I don't know how bonds work totally, but I know we save money usually in these deals.
We don't, we have Lers that, that, you know, they're our financial consultants and they do a phenomenal job. They help us with the sale. So this sale will go out October 7th. They anticipate that the interest rate on this will be, I think it was like 0.966 or something. So it's under 1%, which is just really a good rate for us. I mean, we have a good rating, a good credit rating as a city. So, so, you know, we can, we can get these better rates, which obviously saves money for us in the long run borrowing. The, we do this pretty much every year for the street reconstruction, so that's not uncommon. So a portion of this is for street reconstruction and a fire engine, and another portion is for, also, it's part of the street reconstruction, but it would be more for the, you know, water main work that will go along with that. So there's a lot of water main work that'll go on. That's 3.3 million. And, and you know, the, the, of the initial 3.8 million for street recon, recon programs, those dollars are paid back through the general fund or general levy. And they, they figure over a 10-year period, it'll be about $327,000 a year to make those payments back. And then the 3.3 for the water main, that, that money comes out of the water fund and that's water revenue. So that's how that gets paid. But they're both on a 10-year cycle, so.
Okay. So obviously, I mean, as we're hearing, interest rates are low. It's a good time to do this.
Good time to do that.
They did bring up last night, I thought it was interesting, because I wondered then, why don't you just keep, as they go down, just keep refinancing everything? But it sounds like you can only do it at a certain point when the bond is called due.
Yeah.
Every so often, so it's not like you can do everything every year?
Exactly. And, and we've already done some of it, you know, last year we did that to, to take advantage of the lower rates, you know. And so if you already have a lower rate, there's, there's a point at which, you know, it doesn't make sense to do it because you do incur costs in, in the refinancing.
It's like refinancing a home.
Yep, absolutely.
You gotta weigh both.
You gotta weigh both, right. Yep.
All right. And then there was a discussion brought up by Councilmember Griszkowiak regarding about our outstanding debt and wanting to sort of have a work session, maybe you kind of determined to talk about that. I know there's a couple of people that brought up, kind of looking at our long-term debt.
Yeah, as I recall, Councilmember Wells was hoping that that conversation would be in January.
Right, once he's done, yes, yes.
But, but yeah, I think Councilmember Griszkowiak had some good points. And it's just, again, we, we have a good rating, good credit rating. We have a good, solid, you know, our debt, the way Lers looks at it, they, you know, they've analyzed this. They do it every couple of years where they look at the debt that the city has. And I want to say it's somewhere around $60 million of debt.
50 to 60.
Yeah, something like that. And, and so they, they're very comfortable with where we're at with that. You know, I know that Councilmember Griszkowiak said, I think we, we end up, of our general fund, there's a million dollars that we pay on interest, you know, or to service these loans every year. So it makes sense to, to take a good look at it and see if there's anything else that we can do to make sure that we, you know, we don't get ahead of ourselves. There are some big things coming up that we've talked about, Fire Station 3, we're, you know, we're going to have to do some bonding there, I'm sure, to get the funding for that. So there are things that are coming up that we need to be mindful of. So it's good to, good to be thoughtful of that, so.
Right. Well, like you said, our credit rating is good, so obviously that is, debt is something they take into account.
Absolutely. Yep, yep. So, yep, we're very solid in all of that. We're a very financially well-run city.
Yeah, all right. That's all from our September 15th meeting. Let's jump back now to our first meeting of the month, which again, took place on September 1st. One of the first items there we want to talk about was approving a final payment for the Lyons Coon Creek Park. We don't always talk about final payments, but this was a big project and it's complete.
It's complete. And that's really why I wanted to mention it is, you know, there's a lot of construction going on in Hanson in front of it right now. So it's a little hard to tell that it's complete. I drive Hanson all the time and it wasn't, it wasn't real obvious that it was. So I, in fact, I made a phone call to make sure that it was, that it was open so that we could make mention of that. So yeah, it's, it's available, it's open. And I guess it was probably a week ago that I drove by on a weekend and there was a lot of activity going on there, so.
So people are able to use it now. We were supposed to have one of our summer meetings in the park there, which obviously was canceled with COVID. So I imagine maybe at some point we'll do a ribbon cutting, but we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
People are out there enjoying it at least.
Yep, people are enjoying it. I have not visited the park yet since it's been redone, just viewing it from, you know, from Hanson Boulevard, but it, it looks nice. So I'm excited about that.
I saw, I told you the Lions Club the other day, within the last week or two, I know I saw a picture of them. They installed a new, like, cool lion bench.
Yeah, that's great. That's great.
So we'll have to check that out when we go out there too.
Definitely. Yep, that sounds great.
All right. Council adopted a resolution accepting Cares Act grant funding for election-related costs, kind of what we were talking about. We got an allocation from the Cares Act and now all this money kind of goes to different things.
Yes. So I've been an election judge over the last couple of years and I, I was a judge during the primary. I wasn't on the ballot, so I'm able to do that. In fact, I will be an election judge for the general, but, but outside of my ward, of course. So yeah, so you see firsthand the different changes that had to be made because of the pandemic. We had Plexiglas in front of us, there was extra tables, everybody had to use a pen. So we had to have a lot of pens. And during the general election, of course, that'll, that'll be something. We weren't reusing any pens. So there's definitely extra costs. Another thing was curbside voting, something that's been around for, I don't want to say ever, but it's been around for a while, but not used very often. But of course, during this COVID, we had extra people outside and we had two people that were greeting. So when they would see people getting out of their vehicle, maybe it was an elderly couple or whatever, they, they would approach them and ask if they wanted to do the curbside voting, which worked out really well during the primary. It was probably nice that we had that, that, you know, where we could do that. Kind of the trial run to see how that's going to work. But, but that, again, that's all extra cost to the city because they're going to need extra election judges to help out in that. But this, this grant or this allocation, specifically $31,000 is for election expenses. So it'll be nice to have that money.
Okay. And maybe I'd read it wrong too. Like, this is not necessarily our allocation from the Cares Grant. The county got some probably because it kind of funnels to them for elections?
It was, it was like $240,000 or something that the county got, and our share of that was 31,000. Yep.
All right. Council approved a preliminary and final plat. This is for Egrit Station 10122, Egrit Boulevard, and also flexibility for a drive-through. What we're talking about here is a sort of new concept for Caribou Coffee.
Yeah, so it's a caribou cabin. It's a very small, I want to say it's 600 square feet the building is. It's, it's a very small building. So there's no inside seating to it at all. There's, there will be a patio. So there's patio seating. The drive-through is kind of necessary because, of course, because there's no inside. There's a window, there's a walk-up window and a drive-through. The drive-through required flexibility because it was outside of Port River Walk. So the planning commission that does a great job of vetting issues out and stuff, reviewed it and they recommended that, that it's approval along with the city staff. So it was a pretty easy approval for, you know, the council to make. We're very excited to see this go in there. You know, you got the Central Homes development right across the street from it. So this is basically on the corner of Egrit and Coon Rapids Boulevard, you know, kind of behind the, the Coon Rapids Dam sign that's out there and the garden that's out front, right along the boulevard there. And just nice to see some new development along the boulevard, you know. In all of the years that I've been involved, it seems as though that's been one of the major issues. Even in our survey that we did in 2016, that was a big thing for residents is to see revitalization of, of the boulevard. So this is just, you know, a really good item to see where you've got a business that's deciding that, hey, that's a good location. I want to, I want to build there, you know, especially like a caribou. That's, that's great to see.
Yeah, and the location, I think, is perfect. And with all the commuters needing their coffee on their way to work, it is a good location.
Yep, yep, yep. Very excited about that.
All right. So construction could begin this fall or I didn't ever heard.
I'm not sure exactly when it would begin.
I'm sure they'll get it up as soon as possible.
I would think so, yep.
All right. Council adopted a resolution amending the capital equipment fund. This is sort of a budget-related item?
It is a budget-related item. Yep. So they're moving dollars into, you know, into the 2020 budget so that we can purchase these items. They wanted to purchase them early because, one, there was an opportunity for a slight savings in purchasing them early, but also, so the items are, you know, sidewalk tractor, they're planning on renting a John Deere tractor, and then they would purchase two HLA snowplows or plows. And these are these plows that if you go out and, and view them, they've got all these YouTube videos of this as well. And they're just really nice plows with a remote control. You can, you know, position them in all these different positions. So the main focus of these new plows, because one of them is for a front-end loader, the other is for the John Deere tractor that we'll be renting, is to plow the cul-de-sacs. And I live in a cul-de-sac, so I know the difficulties in, in plowing them and, you know, and the complaints that neighbors or residents have often with, with the piles of snow in their, in their driveways from, from plowing them. So it'll be nice to see the new plows and how they work. And hopefully, hopefully that reduces complaints of, of the plowing in cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, because do they, for cul-de-sacs, do they do, do they ring out the thing first and then leave snow in the middle?
They, they do. And at times, they'll just ring it out so they can, they can have any plow that'll go through and just do that. But, and then, then they usually have the front-end loader that comes in and it'll take all the snow and, you know, they, the front-end loader is able to maneuver a lot differently than the others. And, and generally speaking, they'll, they'll push snow up into yards too. If there's a lot of snow in the center, they, they make sure that they kind of pile it up and then push it up into some of the front, front yards. I mean, there's, there's usually a yard or two in a cul-de-sac that is enough space that, you know, they can push the snow into the yard.
But they eventually get the cul-de-sac cleaned, just like a regular road.
Yep, absolutely. Yep.
So these new ones will maybe allow them to do a better job of that?
I think so. I think so. Yep. It's, it'll be interesting. I work from home, so I get to see them in action all the time.
Yeah, now that you're at home, so you record us some cell phone video.
Right, exactly.
We'll share that the next, after the next snowfall.
Absolutely.
All right. While we're on the topic of budgets, council adopted a resolution adopting the preliminary 2021 tax levy.
Yeah, so I think the main importance of this is, you know, it's, it's the proposed. So at this point, it can't go up, but it can come down. Currently, the proposed, it initially started out as being a zero increase. There were a couple of items that were added back in, two police officers and a, and a, an employee for the fire department. So those items increased it a little bit. So I think we're seeing an increase over last year of about around $250,000, which is still under 1%. Now, again, like I said, the budget can't go up, but it can come down. So there's, there's still a few, you know, there'll still be a few discussions about items in there. There's still, you know, we still have a few months yet before it needs to be finalized. So that gives us a little more time to, you know, see, assess things as far as the pandemic is concerned. I know initially, the property taxes came in the first half of the year very strong. In fact, they were over 100%. But, you know, we, I don't think we'll have the, the second half property taxes in before we have to make any decisions. But, but there'll be some, you know, maybe we'll have some other information at that point, so we can decide. But, but really, nice effort by the, by the staff to be able to come in as low. I mean, as you know, the general, the, the general levy ultimately goes, the majority of it goes to pay for the, the general budget. And the general budget is about 80% staff, you know. So you've got your, you've got your COLAs and you've got your insurance payments, you know, that increase. So very difficult to keep things flat. So really, kudos to the, to the staff for being able to do that.
Yeah, and that was council's goal, was to try to keep it as close to zero as possible with kind of our economic uncertainties and stuff going on now.
Right, right.
But that doesn't always mean, and that's the whole property tax aspect, everyone's homes kind of appreciates at a different time. So even with a 0%, some people will see their taxes go up, while others might see a flat or even a light rate.
Might see a flat or even maybe a slight decrease. Yep, yep, yep. So, and it's not certain of how that will pan out, but, but certainly, the hardest hit over the last few years have been those homes, you know, our Thompson Homes, that are kind of those starter homes. And, you know, you've got, oftentimes, you've got people that have been living in them a long time or new people moving in and, and, you know, starting family. And they've really been hit pretty hard over the last few years. And hopefully this year it works out where those are the ones that aren't hit as hard.
Because those values are jumping.
Because, yes, those values have increased significantly. On the one hand, it's nice to see those, the value of their homes increasing. On the other hand, because of that, they take a bigger chunk of, of the levy. So that's how that works.
All right. Well, we could take a whole show probably explaining property taxes and how it all works.
I'll leave that up to Councilmember Demmer. He does such a nice job of that.
We'll, we'll bring him in to do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Well, that is all we had on those council meetings to talk about. Before we go, want to quickly mention Night to Unite was pushed back. It's normally the first Tuesday in August. It was pushed back due to the pandemic to the first Tuesday in October. We did have some folks register for it, but the decision has been made to kind of cancel the usual police and fire visits due to the pandemic still. But they plan to do a virtual kind of online event for Night to Unite. So check that out on Tuesday, October 4th. I believe from around 4:30 to 7:30 is when some of that stuff will be happening.
Okay.
But they didn't want to have the police and fire doing the interaction at the neighborhood gatherings.
Right.
Folks can still have their own parties and own gatherings.
Right.
On their own, maintaining, you know, the guidelines that the state calls for.
Absolutely, yep.
But I just wanted to mention that before we go.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's unfortunate. It's always nice. Chief Wise always does a nice job of, of, you know, articulating the point of how important it is for neighbors to get out and get to know each other, you know, to take time to, to meet. And, you know, often it's, it's done with a meal and that's a little bit harder to do this time around. And certainly, the city has done such a nice job of sponsoring the event with, with police and fire being able to, you know, to go out to as many of these parties as possible. I think in the last three years, I've been able to ride along with the fire department and, and I think we've hit probably at least 10 different parties, you know, each night. So it really is a, a great opportunity and I'm glad that we're doing something at least this year. But hopefully, next year, things will be a little more normal and we can get back to, to getting out and having those events and, you know, connecting with our neighbors. It's so important for us, so.
Yeah, because we've learned that we've taken some of that for granted. So whenever normal happens again.
Yes, yeah. Let's hope it's soon.
All right. Well, that's all I have unless there's anything else you want to add?
Nothing I have.
All right. Well, thank you for being here today.
Absolutely.
Thank you at home for watching and we'll see you back here after our two meetings in October.